Thank you for being here tonight. Before our meeting officially begins, we have an invocation offered by Commissioner Twine, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Lord, again, we come before your throne of grace, thanking you for your mercy and guidance. We also seek your wisdom as we handle the city's business tonight. In your name we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Doster, would you call over the roll, please?
Mr. Poole?
Present.
Lloyd?
Here.
Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mr. Lockhart?
Here.
Ms. Twine?
Here.
Mr. Waddington?
Here.
Would someone care to make a motion to excuse Ms. Lloyd?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. Folks, Ms. Paige Doster is filling in as our acting clerk today, tonight, and we thank you for your service tonight while Mrs. Cresser is out of town. Commissioners, we have before you the minutes of our meeting of September 23, 2019. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Waddington.
I move that we accept the minutes of the September 23 meeting and suspend the final reading.
Second.
Then a motion second, discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved. We turn now to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission on any of our regular agenda items, or legislation that we have in force, that is, please step to the microphone, give us your name and address, and share with us your thoughts or questions.
Good evening. My name is Nick Edser. I'm with First Energy. I introduced myself to all of you about a few months ago, so I just wanted to make sure that there was no outstanding issues with Ohio Edison or First Energy that I should be made aware of. Just wanted to answer any questions while I was here, so. No news is good news, so.
Can you lower the power rates?
Oh, yeah, sorry, yeah. Talking Columbus about that one, I guess, so, yeah. I'll let you all know that the Board of Elections did provide me with a list of all polling locations in Sandusky for next month's election, so during Election Day, all polling locations are considered a critical facility, so they have the highest priority for restoration. So if there's any type of thunderstorm or weather activity, and there is a power outage, they have the highest priority. So we should be, we get to go for Election Day, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for stopping by.
Anyone wishing to address any of the agenda items, legislation, ordinances, and such
on our agenda tonight? Please step to the microphone, give us your name and address. If not, then we have a swearing in tonight.
I'm sorry. Oh. I'm sorry, I did not understand. Apologize.
I have a question about the, let's see, the Camp Street transfer of liquor license. That's F. I understand we discussed things a while ago where someone went outside Sandusky and got a liquor license to bring into Sandusky, and it was approved. Now, this one is, I'm assuming, from the previous owners of Camp Street. But that brings me to item G. I thought we had reached our limit on these liquor licenses of various degrees, but we're having a new D-5 tonight, and just wondered where this one was coming from. It says, doesn't request a hearing. It's for Cedar Point Sports Park. I didn't underst, I really never thought they'd be taking alcohol out there, but I'm wondering where that appeared from, and how they received it, and why we're not having a hearing on it.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. I'm going to ask Mr. Heiberg either tonight, or if he needs to step back, maybe the next meeting, to give us all just a refresher on how it is to liquor licenses. It is mostly done by the state.
Right.
There's very little room for the locals to have any impact upon it unless there are serious code violations or policing problems. And they do, there are a number of different ways that liquor licenses can come into our community, or be transferred, or created anew. So it's pretty complicated. I'm going to ask Mr. Trevor either to explain that tonight on the fly, or at the next meeting, if he needs to just.
Because I don't necessarily want to be a part of the, you know, the process for it, but you all probably would be, would you not?
It just depends on circumstances.
Okay, I'll wait. I'll hold it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Trevor's got an answer, I think.
Mr. Heiberg, you prepared on the fly?
Very briefly. Through you, Commission President. You're absolutely right. Each section, D-2 has different rules than a D-5. A D-5 may have, there may be a D-5J, there may be a D-5I, and there's a whole bunch of different rules. So off the top of my head, I can't tell you why the D-5 is available. I'm not sure which ones are available and which ones aren't, but.
If you want to read, you could give me some, like, to look that up.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Heiberg. Anyone else wishing to address any of our regular items of business tonight? If not, then, Chief, I'm going to turn the meeting over to you for purposes of swearing in. Newest police officer, Zachary Tyson.
Yeah, we have Reserve Officer Zachary Tyson coming up. He's been with us for three or so months now, maybe four. He's famous for saving a bald eagle in BDU. I already like him.
So I'm going to read the first paragraph. I'm going to ask you to raise your right hand. This is pretty recently before, so you can keep that right hand. On this day, you are here by commission as a peace officer in service of police officer of the City of Sandusky, Ohio. This is 737.02 of the Ohio Remotes Code, 127.03 in the Confining Order of the City of Sandusky. As such, we shall, we shall. Raise your right hand. Aye, Zachary Tyson solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution, the laws of the United States of America, the Constitution, and the laws of the State of Ohio.
Aye, Zachary Tyson solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution, the laws of the United States of America, the Constitution, and the laws of the State of Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of the City of Sandusky, Ohio, for which I am appointed, and to the best of my ability, will discharge the duties of this office. Congratulations, I say.
He's going to have his gal to come pin his badge on. Yes, I will add one caveat while he's signing that. academy, which is an incredible feat, so he won't be using any of our sick time. He was number one in physical agility, and he also was Andy Dunn Scholarship Award winner. So he's had some great accomplishments so far, and we look for many more.
Perfect, thank you, Chief. And Chief Bulcox, I want to thank you again for bringing this tradition to our community or back to it. I don't know if we had once done it, but I think bringing in our new police officers and firefighters and recognizing them publicly is just a really great tradition, so I hope that remains part of this city for a long time to come. Commissioners, we have before us a number of pieces of legislation that have been recommended by staff, along with accompanying communications. Would someone care to make a motion to accept those?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion and second, discussion. Without objection, the motion be approved. Hearing no objection, the motion is approved, and the communications are accepted. Ms. Doster, would you present? I'm sorry, excuse me. Commissioners, is there anyone who wishes to have any of the regular, or the consent agenda items moved on to the regular agenda? If not, then, Ms. Doster, would you present the consent agenda, please?
Yes. Item A, accepting seven parcels through the land reutilization program. Item B, repeal of legislation and approve, approval of a new purchase agreement for 219 Arthur Street through the land reutilization program. Item C, amending legislation and approval of new purchase agreement for 1432 East Farwell Street. Item D, change order number one and final with Great Lakes demolition for the Thorpe Drive Culvert replacement project. That is a deduct. Item E, change order number one and final with United Survey Incorporated for the Sloan Street Manhole Replacement Slip Linings Project. That is a deduct. Item F, D-2, D-2X, and D-3 liquor permit transfers for Old Camp Street Tavern LLC, Two Riches Bar and Tavern LLC, doing business as Old Camp Street Tavern, 1040 Camp Street. Item G, new D-5 liquor permit for Cedar Point Sports Park LLC, doing business as indoor facility, 2700 Cleveland Road.
Thank you. Commissioners, having heard the consent agenda items, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Fine.
I move to accept the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, and declaring that all ordinances and resolutions, as drafted and presented to the City Commission under the consent agenda, shall take effect in accordance with the section reflected in the ordinances and/or resolutions, whether it be in accordance with Section 13 or Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Ms. Doster, would you pull the commissioners on the motion first, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Now on the ordinances and resolutions, please.
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Those ordinances and resolutions and motions are approved and adopted. Doster, would you present item number one, please?
Item number one is an ordinance declaring one Life Pac 12 heart monitor as unnecessary and unfit for city use pursuant to Section 25 of the City Charter, authorizing and directing the city manager to purchase one Life Pac 15 heart monitor from Physio Control of Redmond, Washington, through the State of Ohio Cooperative Purchasing Program, and declaring that this ordinance shall take effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Waddington?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, second, discussion. Bulcox, anything to add to this communication?
Through you, Mr. President. We're just very happy to get this piece of equipment. It's a new generation. The Life Pac 12 is obsolete now, and it's hard to find parts for it. This piece of equipment will bring us up to all three ambulance having the newer Life Pac, as well as our frontline engine, medic engine, having this Life Pac as well. Whenever we have, for instance, like, a heart attack, we can transmit the report back to the hospital through the technology provided with this pack, through cellular technology. It's just a greater upgrade, and it just kind of ensures the quality of life and intervention on behalf of the department and the citizens that we are caring for.
Thank you, Chief. Commissioners, questions or comments? Ms. Doster, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
And now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Ms. Doster, would you present item number two, please?
Item two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to expend funds for the brick siding and masonry repair work at the administrative laboratory and Ferris Chloride Buildings at the wastewater treatment plant by Gartland DBS Incorporated of Cleveland, Ohio, and declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Klein?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under the suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, and second, discussion. Mr. Klein, this is no palace that your folks are working down there. Can you give us a little bit of background on what is we're undertaking, a pretty significant investment?
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President. Out at the wastewater treatment plant, you guys recall, we have been recently redoing roofs to stop the water from infiltrating. One of the first ones that we did was the lab building out there, which also has the break room for all the employees. Well, as soon as we finished that roof in 2017, the employees started taking the drywall off because they needed to fix what was wet on the drywall. And once they took that off, they noticed that there was black mildew, black mold inside the walls, and realized that it was also, water was also getting in through the mortar and through the walls of the building. So this year, we got an architect on site to take a look at it and figure out exactly what is needed. They came up with tuck pointing, recaulk, and doing some repairs around the windows and doors of the entire building. And we figured while we're out there, we'd have them take a look at the other buildings, and they found that the Ferris Chloride Building also needed some work on it. So we figured we'd join the program through the state, well, it's the U.S. Communities' Government Purchasing Alliance. This is not the state contract. It's another one that's similar to that, that has 90,000 public agencies, so you can get a competitive price. So we're hoping to get this work done before winter to reduce the damage and be able to fix the walls. And we did get the mold remediated several months ago, so.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Klein. Your communication indicates it's a 1958 building, so with very little maintenance done since that time, other than the roof. Commissioners, questions or comments? Ms. Doster, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number three, please.
Item number three is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with D.L. Smith Concrete LLC of Norwalk, Ohio, for the Buchanan Street Reconstruction Project, Hayes Avenue to Campbell Street, declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, and second, discussion. Mr. Klein, why don't you give us an overview of what this project is? It's a long-awaited street improvement, please.
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President. This is Buchanan Street, so we will be going from Hayes to Campbell. The western portion of the street, we're going to be completely pulling out all the concrete, like we have on several other roads. It's beyond any maintenance and any repair that we can do to it, so we will pull out all the concrete, put asphalt back in. On the eastern end of the project, from Thomas to Campbell, we will be resurfacing and patching the areas that are bad. Along with this, we are coordinating with Pierce, which was just awarded, since they'll both be getting underway in the spring, and we are also coordinating with the construction for the school. And they're doing quite a bit of curb and quite a bit of sidewalk along their property. We will be repairing curb and repairing any damaged sidewalk along Buchanan as well. Also, as part of this project, the contractor is required to coordinate with the contractor on Pierce, so that we don't hinder or cause any problems to the south campus for Firelands Regional Medical Center. So it's going to be very interesting to see how all these contractors play nice in the same area, but we know that they can do it. We've worked with D.L. Smith and with Smith Paving in the past, and they're the ones doing Pierce and Buchanan. So we're looking forward to getting these two out of the way and doing the grant. We did get grant money for this as well through Ohio Public Works Commission, so we're hoping to get this project done right away and get it done before school opens.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, questions or comments? Doster, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That ordinance is adopted. Item number four, please, Ms. Doster.
Item number four is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to enter into a contract with D.L. Smith Concrete LLC of Norwalk, Ohio, for the Buchanan Street Reconstruction Project, Hayes Avenue to Campbell Street, declaring that this ordinance shall take immediate effect in accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Commissioners, having heard this communication, how do you wish to proceed?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Poole?
I move for the adoption of this ordinance under suspension of the rules in full accordance with Section 14 of the City Charter.
Second.
Then a motion, and second, discussion. Mr. Klein, why don't you give us an overview of what this project is? It's a long-awaited street improvement, please.
Yes, sir. Through you, Mr. President. This is Buchanan Street, so we will be going from Hayes to Campbell. The western portion of the street, we're going to be completely pulling out all the concrete, like we have on several other roads. It's beyond any maintenance and any repair that we can do to it, so we will pull out all the concrete, put asphalt back in. On the eastern end of the project, from Thomas to Campbell, we will be resurfacing and patching the areas that are bad. Along with this, we are coordinating with Pierce, which was just awarded, since they'll both be getting underway in the spring, and we are also coordinating with the construction for the school. And they're doing quite a bit of curb and quite a bit of sidewalk along their property. We will be repairing curb and repairing any damaged sidewalk along Buchanan as well. Also, as part of this project, the contractor is required to coordinate with the contractor on Pierce, so that we don't hinder or cause any problems to the south campus for Firelands Regional Medical Center. So it's going to be very interesting to see how all these contractors play nice in the same area, but we know that they can do it. We've worked with D.L. Smith and with Smith Paving in the past, and they're the ones doing Pierce and Buchanan. So we're looking forward to getting these two out of the way and doing the grant. We did get grant money for this as well through Ohio Public Works Commission, so we're hoping to get this project done right away and get it done before school opens.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Klein. Commissioners, questions or comments? Doster, would you pull the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
Now on the ordinance?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
The motion is approved.
Thank you. Also, at the end of September, the U.S. House Transportation Infrastructure Committee passed the Great Lakes Restoration Initiative Act of 2019, which increases funding for and helps communities to clean up toxic pollution, restore fish and wildlife habitat, manage invasive species, and reduce runoff pollution. We've received a number of grants from that program over the last several years. We'd like to publicly give a special thanks to U.S. Representative Marcy Capter for her support for boosting federal investments to protect and restore the Great Lakes. Of course, we'll continue to monitor upcoming opportunities. Also, a thanks to the Sandusky High School Gentlemen's Club and several city residents, commissioners, and staff who generously donated their time to unload unwanted items from 790 vehicles on dump day. The Streets Division will begin citywide leaf collection on November 6, and will distribute information throughout the press and social media. We ask that residents pay close attention to the dates and times to ensure they receive the best service possible. If residents cannot meet the schedule, there will be a drop-off area for bagged leaves near the Marquette Drive entrance to the City Service Center, seven days a week, from October 21 to January 6. For questions about the city's leaf collection program, please contact Public Works at 419-627-5829. Again, that's 419-627-5829. Requests for qualifications for inspection services for the West Side Utilities and Connectivity Improvements Project and Warren Street Reconstruction Design are due by Friday, November 8, at 1:00 p.m. All questions may be directed to engineering at 419-627-5829. Also, we want to congratulate James J.R. Best on his retirement from his position as chief operator, chief operator after 34 years of public service at Big Island Waterworks. J.R.'s played an integral role in providing safe and refreshing drinking water to the community for over three decades. We'll wish him well in his next chapter. I had a chance to attend, along with Aaron, a really nice retirement party for him at Big Island, where he blew the horn, or the steam, whatever that was, which was really cool. And I will miss his boil alert notices, which we've received several of over the last five years that I've been here. Moving on to community development. Fire damaged properties on North Depot. With regards to the three properties affected by the fire that began at 427 North Depot, the status of each is as follows. 425 North Depot, which was an occupied property, is currently working with their insurance company on completing necessary repairs to make the home habitable. 427 North Depot was a total loss and is a risk of immediate collapse. The City roof three bid for the emergency demo of the property ordered a contract to Ed Berdu and Company to complete the demolition for $8,950. The city is also awaiting reimbursement for the demolition from U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development through their property servicer, BLM 431 North Depot, with damage estimated to be over 50% of the structure, is not at risk of immediate collapse and was not ordered demolished yet. The city is working with property owners to determine if the facility will be demolished or repaired. For the Planning Department, there's an RFP that the city will be releasing for underpass gateway lighting. The city is seeking an artist to partner with a lighting company, electrical company, electrical contractor, or a lighting team to create artistic lighting for the Hayes Avenue Underpass, as well as a possible second location at the Columbus Ave Underpass. These locations have been recommended through the Neighborhood Initiative, Public Art and Placemaking Master Plan. Public Works is taking the lead on the project with input from planning, and the request for proposals will be released the week of October 14, 2019. Also, the Regular Planning Commission meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October 23, at 4:30 p.m. at 2:40 Columbus Ave in the City Commission Chambers. The Regular Board of Zoning Appeals meeting, scheduled for Thursday, October 17, has been canceled. The Regular Landmark Commission meeting, scheduled for this Wednesday, October 16, at 4:30 p.m. at 2:40 Columbus Ave in the Commission Chambers, will involve a general discussion on various items, including required maintenance and the demolition of structures covered by the landmark ordinance. by the landmark ordinance. The meeting is open to the public, and comments will be encouraged. Also, the Regular Arts and Culture Commission meeting scheduled for Tuesday, November 19, at 5:00 p.m. will take place in the city commission chambers. Moving on to recreation. The Sandusky Rec Department would like to invite the community to an open house at their new offices at 222 Meg Street on Tuesday, October 29, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. The department will showcase their new rec room for programming, and artist Leslie Griffin will be working with visitors, young and old, to start work on a mural throughout the day. Other programming is being scheduled throughout the day. The Salvation Army, OGO, and other community partners will be in attendance. Look for updates at the Sandusky Recreation Facebook page. Also, the Rec Department, Buckeye Broadband, United Way of Erie County, and Cameo Pizza are partnering on the third annual Dot the I, Block the M Walk Run on November 30, starting at 8:30 a.m. The event has become a Sandusky tradition on the day of the game. A one-mile Big O option has been added for this year's event, and the race is the final event for the 2019 Run Sandusky Race Series, sponsored by Firelands Regional Medical Center. Interested participants can register online at www.runsignup.com/dotblock2019. Finally, the new operators of the Shelby Street Boat Launch are hosting their first event at the launch on Sunday, October 20. The inaugural Kids Fall into Fishing Derby will start at 8:00 a.m. with weigh-ins at 2:00 p.m. at the boat launch at 101 Shelby Street. The event is free for kids 16 and younger, and registration ends Friday, October 18, at 7:00 p.m. All participants must sign in at the boat launch on Sunday morning between 6:00 and 9:00 a.m. For more information or to help sponsor, or for questions regarding the Kids Fall into Fishing Derby, please call the Sandusky Bait Company at (419) 366-3927, or email them at sanduskybait@gmail.com. That's sanduskybait, B-A-I-T, at gmail.com. That concludes my remarks for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Whoopser. Commissioners, questions or comments for the city manager? If not, then any items of old business?
Mr. Chairman, three weeks ago, we had Commissioner Poole, and I thought it was a good idea at the time, asked that I wanted the sunflower to be the official flower for the city, and he asked for some comments back from the citizens through Facebook, Twitter, email, and we got the results back. It's 701 for, 180 against, so it's just under 80%. So I would like to make a motion to make the sunflower the official flower for the city of Sandusky, since we don't have one currently.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Lockhart?
In regards to sunflowers, I was saying just before the meeting, I like sunflowers. I've planted a number of sunflowers throughout the city, and in this, I'd like to donate some of the sunflowers that are going in. I think I have about 1,000 seeds or so, so if Mr. Waddington would accept them for his mission, I'll donate some of those sunflower seeds that I had for some of the other neighborhoods.
Yeah, we could take them to, if I could, Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
Okay. I know Tom Spear Kelly's had communication with Tom, and I just talked to him briefly about it. That might be the direction we could take the seeds there. I know he's looking at little pocket parks to grow them next year.
Thank you. Additional discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chairman, just to the folks that were not overly excited about whether we have a sunflower, some people didn't want it. The key is the process. What the flower is, represents our city, is really, it could be just about any one that we choose, and I just hope that the community realizes that we reached out and those that were interested in it all supported having sunflowers. Now, we brought this up to come up with a flower, so now I expect that the staff is going to find lots of little places to put sunflowers, so it actually is the flower of the city. It's nice to have the name, but now we're going to have to plant a lot of sunflowers to make it work. But, so, it's a good thing to do.
Questions or comments? Mr. Doster, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
We now have an official sunflower.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whoopser.
Should put another seal.
Additional items of old business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Whoopser?
Okay, I got, this wouldn't be old, or I knew it'd be old. Every year, we seem to have a reoccurring problem with leaves as the seasons last longer. I was wondering if there's some way we could communicate with the residents as far as catch basins around your house. A lot of the leaves got raked out to the front to pick up, and I know on my street, I went around to shovel and then scrape them back up because it causes flooding or icing if you get further into the season. Is that something that we could look at, maybe reminder on?
Mr. Klein is nodding. I don't know if that's something...
That's a big problem, I would think, correct? Time, it would save a ton of time.
Three, Mr. President. We typically do a press release, and I will work with the gentleman sitting to my left to make sure that we coordinate with them to get out the appropriate information, to let residents know not to be blowing leaves or raking leaves into the roadway, especially over top of catch basins, because even if they're in the road, they're still gonna, as soon as it rains, they're still gonna blow into the catch basin, even if it's not over top of it to start, so we'll get something out.
I think what Mr. Waddington is saying, that we might go just a little step further and let the residents know, we're doing that tonight, right, by saying that, you know, if you see your catch basin clogged, it's perfectly fine, and it'd be a great civic thing to do to go clean it out because it'll reduce the flooding on your street as well or in front of your house, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Twine?
If I may just add, icing's a problem, too, in December. A lot of leaves, we get a lot of icing. They rake them out, and I've seen that, you know, driving around town. That backs out, we got pooling of ice.
Additional items of old business? Any items of new business?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brady?
I'd like to make a motion for an executive session regarding personnel, city managers' evaluation.
Second.
And a motion and second discussion. Mr. Doster, would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please?
Mr. Poole?
Yes.
Mr. Brady?
Yes.
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. Lockhart?
Yes.
Ms. Twine?
Yes.
Mr. Waddington?
Yes.
That executive session is set. Any other items of new business? If not, then we will turn to audience participation. Anyone wishing to address the commission, please touch the microphone, mention your name and address, and share with us your thoughts.
Tom La marca, 20648 Street. I took a drive today to Lyons Park and noticed that the armor stone had been placed along the shore, and that's a major deviation from the master plan that was adopted December 14, 2009 with the Lyons Park project. The master plan calls for removing all the concrete and the debris, cutting the slope back to provide a general transition from the upper park to the water's edge. Portions of the slope are to be planted with a drought-tolerant tall fiscue, which seems to be, perhaps has been done, because I noticed that grass had been planted up to the edge of the stone that had been placed. And then future improvements beyond the restoration of the project include the 10-foot-wide ADA accessible walk to the water's edge, and the ADA path then would be ideal for strollers, walkers, wheelchairs, providing access for those folks as well. I think perhaps the stone was put there in error. I mean, I don't know. I'm asking, and hopefully you can dig into that, because you're not supposed to be the stone that's out there. It was supposed to be a sloping grass terrain leading to the Pebble Beach. And we all recognize that is a natural Pebble Beach. It's not sand, but it's a nice, it's a nice beach. So if you could dig into that, again, I reiterate that the stone is not part of the master plan for Lyons Park. It's supposed to be getting restored. It's the only public access for a public beach for the citizens of Sandusky that we have. So we missed that opportunity when the famous supply property got sold, and that would have been a beautiful beach for the citizens of Sandusky. On another note, I noticed that the sign on Cleveland Road for the historic part of Erie Boulevard, nice sign. Somebody did a nice job with that. I think they did nice work there. And then the concrete that was poured on the Jackson Street pier, creating the concrete steps, still to me appears to be higher than the 4.6, 4 feet 6 inches above the baseline. I thought the baseline was the edge of the sheet pile, and somewhere, they've come up with a new baseline, and I'm not quite sure where it's at. So I'm just curious about that. And then for $8 million, I would like to think that we could have either had granite or marble for that if we had to do it at all versus pouring concrete. I mean, that's kind of really cheapening it up, and, you know, so I don't know that we got our $8 million worth there. Thank you for hiring the police officer, Zachary Tyson. Congratulate him, even though he's gone, and, you know, keep safe, be good. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Marco. Anyone else present wishing to address the commission?
105 West Water Street, Unit 2A, Sandusky. I just have a question about the hole in the ground next to the parking garage and whether there's been any kind of settlement on that issue with the county. I did talk to Pat Shenago, and he said he'd look into it, and that was in the middle of the summer. And I just think the hole's been there 40 years since the parking garage was there. I just wish somebody could look into it and study it, maybe, and maybe find some kind of an answer for that. It's right in the center of the town, and I think as we try to get the town back together and beautify the town, it's maybe been there a little too long, so just asking. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Burge. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
Hello, my name's Dela Stewart. I live at 1010 First Street. I'm actually here kind of for my family, and once I say this, I'm sure everybody in the room will know. I was raised at 1340 First Street. My maiden name is Harold. My mother and my sister still live in the house. The house was built in 1904, and that's Jeannie and Flora Harold. And I'm more here for the issue of the bike path, and if we can get some clarity on that to bring peace of mind to my mother and my sister. They had received a little map in the mail, per se, and it looked like it was going right up next to the house. And if I can bring some closure to them, or what can happen, and how they can have some security and some peace of mind, knowing it's not going to be literally on the side of the house. And I said that it was just a drawing, possibly, and not actually what is detailed, and excuse me, I wish I would have listened in government and finance classes, but, and so they're just not, it's terrifying to them both, what is happening right now. I love the thought of a bike path. I love what we've been doing with the city, but for the last 20 years, my parents, when the railroad vacated the property, they thought they should have the property. Whether it was right or wrong, they did not get it. And so now they have a fence on either side, and to them, it looks like the bike path is going clearly right up next to the house. And I just don't know what we can do. And they got a letter just saying, "We're coming to put tax down," and that was about it, and I don't know where we go from here.
I would encourage you, Ms. Stewart, to follow up. Are you the right person to follow up with after the meeting? Or is it Mr. Klein?
Mr. Klein.
Okay.
Okay.
Sure we're that. So if you could follow up with Mr. Klein afterward, I'm sure he'll either answer your question or puts you in touch with the right people.
Yes, I believe it was your name on the letter that she received, because I'm sure you've heard from her loudly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else wishing to address the commission?
I forgot my name last time. I didn't forget it, I forgot to say it. Harleen Thompson, 1902 Adrian Circle, Sandusky. When we're talking about the leaves and the catch basins, we've had problems down on Adrian Circle. We've been there 48 years, and we've had different catch basins, and we had to plead with many people to get the old type back in. That catch basin is the only one on Adrian Circle. The one down on Cleveland Road and Pipe Street, one. One down Pipe Street and Perkins Avenue, one. Water comes down, it comes right down, it just comes down Adrian Circle. So that is a problem, and we should find a way to either put another one on, another two somewhere on Pipe Street. But I know there were storms and things going on, and my husband's out there with his high boots and his rake and cleaning that out. We got the new one put in, and it's better, but those leaves do come down and leading to the next item, snow. Oh, no, back, sorry. As far as letting people know, you said, "Well, we're letting them know tonight." Who are you letting know tonight? You're letting the people know who are here, and you're letting people know who have YouTube or a computer to hear this meeting. That does not include all the citizens of Sandusky. So I think there should be some small effort more toward letting them know about the leaf pickups. We'll get to the snow. When the snow comes, we're at the end of the cul-de-sac in front of the one catch basin. And when they bring the, plow the snow, they come down the street. Where do they stop? Catch basin. So that gets filled up, and we call them and have to have them come out and get it out of there. But I think for the wintertime, when you have a situation like that with very small